Good evening. Welcome to the Muscatine Community School District Board of Education meeting for Monday, October 25th. Madam Secretary, would you take role and help us determine a quorum, please?
Yes. Director Cooney?
Here.
Director Drabah?
Here.
DeBeet?
Here.
Finn?
Here.
McCarter?
Morgan?
Here.
Sure.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Thank you. You would all stand with me and join me in the pledge, please. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors this evening and our media representatives. We appreciate those of you that are here this evening and those that are watching online as well. Our first item on our agenda for our work session tonight is for the board to name a delegate for the Iowa Association of School Boards Convention. In past years, you've had an individual that has attended and been more than willing to do that. That individual will not be attending in a board capacity this year. And so it would be best if we have someone that represents the board. The delegate assembly is held on Thursday, and the purpose of that is boards are given votes, which are... They're weighted votes based on the size of your district. The board submitted what our priorities were for this year, asking for the association to move forward with. You will be going through a process of voting on those with school boards across Iowa. So, do I have anyone that is willing to attend? Erin's the only one that's off the hook.
I have a couple of questions that has to deal with it, if I could, please.
Absolutely.
It has indicated there, and I'm not sure it says nominating caucuses area, and I'm not sure what that is. Come on here, and it says 6B. And I don't know if we're part of that or what that is.
So that may be, without reading that, that potentially could be if there is... You have a director districts that represent the various sections of Iowa in that map you're looking at. And I don't know if that is naming... If there's a director that's running in that area, that would also be one of the things that happens during the delegate assembly as well. It's a very painless process, I promise.
And the other question I have, and I don't know... Clint, has the candidates that have running for school board, have they been made aware of that if they are elected, that this is an option for them to take and go as well?
Yeah, that's one of the things, once the election is over next week, we'll start talking to them about.
I would, if no one else is available in which to be able to go, I would so delegate myself for that role.
I second that.
So we don't have any... Since we don't have any action items tonight, but it is a volunteer... It is a volunteer position. So Karen, I will slate you down, and I can... We'll ask if Daphne can get you registered for that, so that you'll get some information sent to you. And thank you for doing that. All right. Next on our agenda is an update on our dual-language program.
Yes. Good evening. So we would like to share with the board tonight an update about our dual-language program. So joining us virtually is Amy Maswera. She is the lead consultant with Adelante Educational Specialists. So Amy has been facilitating discussions with our MCSE Dual Language Leadership Team in the development and implementation of our dual-language immersion program. So those of us that are sharing with you tonight are also a part of our district's dual-language leadership team. So Amy is going to begin with answering the question of what is dual-language?
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me, virtually being flexible. I'm excited to be here to talk with you a little bit about the journey that we have been on, exploring the dual-language programming for Muscatine School District. So I am here to answer that question. What is dual-language? Dual-language programs are programs that will integrate native English-speaking students or students who speak English in the home with native Spanish-speaking students or students who speak Spanish in the home. We integrate them into the same classroom to learn the content through a specific language allocation in English and Spanish. Typically, we do like to balance the classrooms between half-native English speakers and half-native Spanish speakers, and that really just depends on the interest level and the demographics of the district. Dual-language programs can begin with 90% of the instruction in Spanish and 10% in English. That's an immersion program. And then that ratio increases each year. The amount of English increases by 10%, and the amount of Spanish decreases by 10% until you reach 50/50. There's also programs that we call 80/20, where it's 80% of the day is started in Spanish and 20% is in English, as well as there are 50/50 models, where half of the instructional minutes are in English and half of the instructional minutes are in Spanish. We call dual-language programs an enriched education program model. This means that the curriculum is taught through the use of two languages, hence enriching the education of all students who are participating in the program. There's a lot of research on the brain, the benefits of becoming bilingual, especially at the early grades. In a dual-language program, all students do receive instruction in literacy in both English and Spanish, starting right away in kindergarten, so that way they're able to develop the language and literacy skills needed to become bilingual and biliterate. What dual-language is not, it's not a subtractive program. And what I mean by that is we never will take away a language. In our old bilingual model, we consider bilingual being where we start in Spanish, for example, and as the student moves up through the grade levels, we take away the Spanish and replace it with English. In a dual-language program, we never take away a language. Students are always learning in two languages. It's not a remedial program. It is an enriched education model, and it's not based on our traditional school or district structure that if we had a bilingual program. So it looks a little bit different. It's a self-contained classroom where students are together, for example, kindergarten, together, learning together through that specific language allocation. There's different types of dual-language programs. One is a one-way immersion, where we would have all Spanish speakers, for example, in the classroom, learning through that language allocation. We have a two-way immersion program, which is where we have English speakers and Spanish speakers in the classroom together, learning through that language allocation. And there's also a world-language immersion, where you immerse the students in the language, but there's not any of those language models in the classroom. For example, if we wanted to run a Chinese immersion program, we wouldn't need Chinese speakers in there for that world-language immersion.
So what does the research tell us? Well, here are just seven data points, and you also have a copy of this in front of you. So what research tells us is that English learners score significantly higher on state tests. English speakers score higher on state tests. Dual-language is the best program model for the Spanish-speaking students. African-American English speakers score higher on state tests. English learners master English better than English learners in an ESL-only program. We know that special-needs students score higher on state tests than special-needs students in English mainstream classrooms, and develop that proficiency in two languages. And we also know that students experience full gap closure rather than partial gap closure.
The goals of the program are different than the goals of a monolingual, English-only program. So when you put a dual-language program into place, your goals are bilingualism and biliteracy in two languages for all participants, grade-level academic achievement in both English and Spanish in this case, as well as a cross-cultural competency, a cultural competency, which is that social justice, that diversity, that appreciation of different cultures and different people. There's also non-negotiables. When we set up a dual-language program, we do have some non-negotiables, so that we keep the fidelity of the program in place. In elementary, we would like... We need a minimum of 50% of the instruction in the target language and a maximum of 90. That target language for us would be Spanish. We do not want to drop below 50% of Spanish instruction. We want to make sure that we do have separate spaces for language learning. So we have our English space, we have our Spanish space, and we do not want to have translations. So there is not that concurrent translation going on in the program. And we also ask for that minimum of a K-5 commitment. Ideally, we want it to go all the way up through K-12, but we really want that commitment so that way that bilingualism and biliteracy takes time, we're able to see the students really begin to develop both languages. And then secondary, there's non-negotiables of that program as well.
Hello. So I'm going to go over the overview of the program model. So we have piloted a bilingual program at the Muscatine Early Learning Center, and you'll hear from Noelia here in a little bit, who is our teacher. So in our program, we do a 50/50. But in kindergarten, we're looking at starting with 80/20, meaning that 80% of the instruction is done in Spanish and 20% is done in English. So this is just kind of a quick graphic that you can see that kind of shows that 80/20 in kindergarten, and then it slowly starts to progress until you get to that 50/50. So first grade would be 70/30, second would be 60/40, and then at that third-grade level is where we get to that 50/50, where instruction is done 50% in English and 50% in Spanish. I will say, the district dual-language leadership team is still kind of working through this as well. So this is an option. This is what I would say we're probably looking at closest, as far as what we would like to see with the dual-language immersion program, but it's not set. With that said, so I had shared preschool is considered a bilingual. So we have just taken our curriculum that we have for all of our four-year-olds, and Noelia is teaching it 50% in English, 50% in Spanish. What she's finding, though, is the kids are picking up so quickly that we do want to look at, you know, would it make better sense for the preschool to also go to an 80/20 model? So we're going to kind of be gathering some data and looking at if that is an option for us come next year. And like I said, you'll hear a little bit more from her later, so.
Thanks, Jessie. Good evening, everyone. I'm Corey, Space Principal at Franklin School, and I've been working with Amy and the district dual-language leadership team over this first semester. As we've been learning along together, I would also like to say that in addition to Noelia and Jessie, Becky and myself, we've also included one of our instructional coaches as well as our EL teachers. And so we have that team comprised, and as we've been learning about what will this look like going forward in Muscatine, we've made some initial decisions on the recommendations of Amy and the different program models that we've looked at. And so I would share with you that those things that we've looked at are, we would like to move forward with adopting a dual-language immersion program, as Amy reviewed those models with you. And we are looking at a target implementation year with 21/22. So we've begun in the preschool, as you'll hear a little bit from Noelia here in just a bit about, and then moving forward, starting with one kindergarten classroom in our district, and then working to add a section at each grade level every year moving forward, with the goal being ultimately to roll this up district-wide, pre-K through 12. And what we've looked at and learned about, we believe that starting with that 80/20 model that Jessie just referenced would be the best fit for our district at this time. And we recognize that this will be a district-wide program. And so in order to make that opportunity available to students across our district, recognizing that we're going to need to provide some transportation, that's something that we're currently figuring out. That location has been determined. Get some information, share some information with our community, as well as get some feedback from them, and that will be taking place coming up here, as you can see, in December. So we'll be joined by Amy again at that time to share that information and determine some additional further steps. And I think now Noelia is going to share some exciting things from her classroom.
Buenas tardes. My name is Noelia Espinal, and I am the bilingual teacher at the Early Learning Center. So we have been in session now for close to two and a half months, and the amount of language the children have picked up has been amazing. I am not translating. They know I'm stopping the gestures, and they know to get up, go to their chairs, and we're doing different things. We're doing our message both in English and in Spanish. When I do my message in English, they still want to talk in Spanish and tell me to put the punto at the end, the period at the end of the sentence. We do small groups, the same, in English and in Spanish, and they're picking up a lot. So it's just been really, really interesting to see, and I think I've used Spanish for eight years now that I've been a teacher, but this has been the first time that we've... I've done a program like this, and I've noticed, we've talked about it, just some of the leadership that some of these children have taken on, where they're... In the past, they've been more reserved, and they're coming up to anybody that walks into the room, and they're speaking to them in Spanish, thinking that everybody can understand them. So I'm having a lot more leaders, and so that's really exciting to see, too. So we have a video. Tony came over last week and recorded Noelia's classroom, so we have just a short little clip for you that we would like to share, and you'll see how much fun it is in her room, and you're probably going to want to come visit and maybe stay for the whole day. Okay. Ahorita nos vamos a ir a las mesas. Nos gusta esta canción. Okay? Vamos a jugar bingo de formas. Right? Bingo de formas. Quiero que sepa. They have more than one shape, but one at a time.
Sure.
And then they're going. Un círculo si no tiene, la próxima forma. ¿Qué es? Un círculo. Y quiero... Y quiero... Vamos a hacer tortillas. Aquí está la masa seca. Y aquí está la masa ya preparada. Le pusimos agua, y los niños van a formar su tortilla. Hay plástico porque en vez de así se pega, y después la van a cocinar, y después se la van a comer. Okay, so I have masa, dough. This is dry. We add water, and it tends to sticky, so we use plastic, so that it doesn't take... And then after they form it, they'll go and cook it, and then they get to eat it.
So as you're chunking and chewing, are there any questions that any of you have for myself or any of our people up here?
So, I'm assuming, Corey, since you gave the presentation, that we're planning on housing this at Franklin, or do we know where it's going to... Where the one room will be at to start with?
So Mike, that decision hasn't been made by the dual-leadership language team yet, or language leadership team yet. There are a couple of our schools we know in our community that, as we learn more about this, the demographics of those schools would be good fits. And so we are working through that to figure out what our next step is, and some of that will be based on some input from our community, but that decision hasn't been made yet.
Okay. You said that it's going to be one classroom. Is there a cap size on what's a tradition... Or what are we thinking about as a cap size for the classroom?
Yeah, that's a great question. So as we've learned with Amy working through this, what we typically look at for a recommendation at the kindergarten-classroom level would be approximately 25 students that we would be capping it at, with the understanding that enrollment sometimes, as students enter and leave the district, that may adjust. But 25 is our target number for our first class section.
Okay. And Mike, just to follow up on that, mostly because as those kids go through the additional grade levels, as they move out, you can't just backfill kids into that program. So naturally, over time, there's attrition in that classroom, where it kind of gets back to closer to our district average for class sizes. So you always start a little bit bigger with those dual-language classrooms, and again, over time, they kind of right-size themselves.
All right. So that kind of answered a little bit of the futuristic question. I know that we wouldn't have the idea of how you move people in and out, or it's just if there's attrition, if people move out, they decide it's not a good fit for them, that class will just get smaller and smaller, but basically whatever they have as a kindergarten class will move forward for six years, right?
So we have kind of developed a task list, so to speak, and one of those things that, Mike, you're referring to is guidelines for entrance criteria, getting into the program. Do we do a lottery system? Also, you know, securing that... Developing that mission and vision, obviously communication. We also want to do some school visits to see other sites that would be really helpful to look at. There's a lot of logistics that we have to kind of talk through, program structure, curriculum, PD, what that would look like. So we've kind of developed a task list. Amy has kind of been really instrumental in helping us think through these things and get ahead of it, because those are things that we'll have to determine, and staffing, what that looks like, year one, year two, year three, and get ahead of that.
How big is the class size today? The classrooms?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Mine is more of an observation is, and I have never tried to make a tutorial in my life, so to see those young kids to be able to take and do that so almost expertly, you know, and everything, I think that's wonderful. I'm going... I think I'm going to enjoy seeing as this process keeps on going.
Well, first of all, I would like to say thank you for sharing this information with us. I'm encouraged to see something like that happening in our district, and I'm hoping that, talking about 25 as a number, I'm hoping whoever starts, continue and end, and we will not lose anybody. The only question I have is, sometimes people might move out of the area, so this is the only case that I want to talk about. So let's assume two students moved outside the area. Now we have two spots available, and let's assume they happen when they are in second grade. Do we have any vision to how we're going to fill these two spots, or are we going to leave those spots unfilled?
So those are the questions that we kind of ask Amy. So Amy, I'm going to have you kind of give us your expert about kids moving in, what it would look like for them to move into a program if we had room for them. What does that look like?
So typically, when you have students move in, and if you have availability in your program, if they are Spanish speakers, they speak Spanish in the home, they do qualify to go... They could qualify to go into the program. But what we would need to do as a team is set up some guidelines of how would we assess that student to be assured that they have the understanding of the Spanish language, as well as possibly some literacy. Unfortunately, English speakers who only speak English in the home have to enter in at kindergarten. Because of the immersion of the 80% of the day in Spanish, their Spanish is really, really high. As you can already see, just in that preschool video, they're picking it up quite quickly. So in order to set up our students who don't speak Spanish in the home for success, they need to come in at kindergarten. Many districts do set up different guidelines, ways to assess students, because if... Let's say, for example, you have a student who comes in from another dual-language program in the area, and you can assess them, and then they can go into the program, as well as, like I said, Spanish speakers who have that support at home in Spanish. But that's all what the team will be working through as to those guidelines for entrance criteria, as well as assessing students who might come in in the later grades. But students who do come in in the later grades do need to have that Spanish, that understanding of Spanish, as well as some literacy.
Thank you. Will the children that are in the pre-K program have preferential treat... Like acceptance into the kindergarten program?
Yes, we had talked about that, too. It wouldn't be necessarily a requirement to go into the kindergarten, but we would give first preference to our four-year-olds that will be entering kindergarten. And I think, based on Noelia and Jessie, the feedback has been pretty positive, so I can't speak for them, but I have a feeling they'll be attending our parent meeting in December, hoping that they can kind of, obviously, move into kindergarten.
So the range... This will be my last question. I'm sorry for putting you guys on the spot on this one, but I'm just curious. The range for immersion is between 50 and 90%, and we're going to try to start 80/20, right? Why is... Why is 80/20 the... Why do you think that that's the best place to start? Or as a group, what kind of the feedback of, this is why we think this is going to set us up for the most success?
Well, we did some professional learning. Amy gave us lots of information, the dual-language leadership team, and we read through different program models. We... She shared a lot of other experiences for us, and if our goal is for them to be bilingual and biliterate, starting them at an 80/20 earlier rather than later is probably more useful. Amy, you can articulate that or share exactly what you told us.
So in a 90/10 model, that was the first one that I shared, that's an extremely difficult model to run because of the 90% Spanish. Many times, you would want to have PE, music, art offered in Spanish, because if that 10% of English just isn't quite enough to be able to get that English instruction. An 80/20 model is actually the most popular model in the area, really, in Illinois, all across the nation, because you're able to immerse kids in Spanish through that allocation, and then their English, you have enough time to also develop their English. In a 50/50 model, where districts are starting right away in kindergarten with half of their instruction in English and half of their instruction in Spanish, while research shows academically, kids come out about the same as an 80/20 program, their bilingualism is what we call a soft bilingualism. They're not as strong in that Spanish proficiency as they would be in an 80/20. I've actually... I'm working with several districts right now who are at a 50/20. districts right now who are at a 50/50 model, starting right away in kindergarten, and they're noticing that their students are not picking up the language as quick or the literacy in both languages. And so they are now starting to switch their program model to an 80/20 so that we can really build that foundation of Spanish before we get to that 50/50.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing a video tonight, so bringing the classroom to us. It's amazing to watch those students and just switch back and forth from one language to the other. So I'm excited to watch what the next several years folds as we watch each of these cohort groups grow in their, in their own learning journey. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. And I look forward to continuing this journey with the district.
Thanks, Amy. All right. Next on our agenda is a Spark Summer School Update. How can summer possibly be over? And we be thinking about the next season?
I know. We're already planning for that next summer. Hi, everyone. I'm Candy Steele, principal at Jefferson. And Cory and I are going to be just giving you a bit of an overview of our fun summer. So we're going to start off with just a video. And Spark, by the way, stands for Summer Program for the Arts, Recreation, and Knowledge.
We're having a great time with the kids and with the staff from Muskeet Spark. We're really excited about just being able to provide students with such an incredible opportunity, surrounding them with so many wonderful things that it just seems like they hate to leave each day. So we're really having a wonderful time.
Yeah. So in the afternoons, the classes are really focused on hands-on enrichment learning, teamwork sort of opportunities. And in many of the classes, we have community organizations that are pushing in. Musser Public Library is teaching a class to kindergartners all about bridges. The Y is doing a sports-like camp with fourth graders. Muscatine Community College is doing career exploration and goal setting with all the fifth and sixth graders. Muscatine County Conservation is dropping in and doing all sorts of great animal and science experiment stuff with, I think, just about every grade level. And then we have the Art Center.
We spark an interest where they're like, school's fun. I want to come to school. So then all of a sudden, they're not, you know, they come every day, they start to learn more, and all of a sudden they can get to the high school, and we start talking about careers, and we start asking questions like, what do you want to be? And they can say, hey, I tried this. And we can start to eliminate or even open their minds to things that they've never thought of. We have a lot of kids that are doing STEM activities that may not have ever had an opportunity to do it. And, you know, I always look at it this way. There's, you know, over 400-plus kids here in the Spark, and that any one of them could be inventing something that I may buy someday, and I would be proud of. And so those are the things that we want to do. We want to push kids' imagination. We want to look at their critical skills. And we also want them to say, hey, here's something to try. Let's go outside the box. I've never done it. It's fun. And in the end, they can come back and go home, you know, tonight or at the end of the summer going, I had a lot of fun learning.
Absolutely. It's really important for us to be involved in these programs because we want to do as much outreach as possible. We want the community to know that Muscatine Community College is here for everyone. It's here for youth. It's here for adults. It's here for high school students. We are here to serve the community and serve the surrounding community in whatever way possible. If we can do some outreach to our youth and just let them know that we're here for degrees, for short-term training, for continuing education, then that is all part of our mission and our goals for our institution.
Musser Public Library was really, really happy to be invited to be part of this whole venture this summer, because we feel like we're all about education as well, even though it's a slightly different way than the schools are. So we were really delighted to be asked and to be part of it. So what we're doing is a bridge project, a project about our bridges in Muscatine, the Norbert F. Beckey Bridge, as well as we're going to introduce kids to the old High Bridge that is no longer here. If you go down to the riverfront, you can see the pillars that once supported the bridge. And we're doing all sorts of bridge activities. We've done bridge building so far with Legos and with clay and popsicle sticks. And we did, oh, with red solo cups and paper. That was actually a really, really good one.
Today, what we'd like to do is we'd like to recap all the things that we've learned last week. It's been a long, four-day weekend. And we'd like to go over all that and kind of take what we've learned and have them be contractors and design on paper their own bridge, and then have to sell their bridge and why their bridge is better than maybe some other bridges, using all the different things that we've learned through physical bridge building we've done last year.
I thought it was a great opportunity to finally start my silver cord after not having a lot of silver cord my freshman or sophomore year. And so, and I felt like what my future career wants to pertain to, or what I want to get into in the future, this would be a great start for us.
It was really critical for us to be able to make sure they have the skills that they need to go into the upcoming school year. So that really was the priority for this year and planning. But what we also wanted to recognize was the students in something that's really enriching and engaging, kind of a hook, if you will, that'll draw them in each day. And so I think one of the things that we've recognized with the program in this year is we've been able to accomplish that. You know, the kids are getting out of their cars and running into the building, excited to start their day, looking forward to picking up where they left off the previous day. And that, again, is really, it's a testament to the amount of work and effort that the teachers have put into developing an engaging curriculum. It's the partnerships with our community partners that Kim was mentioning that have really got us in a great place. So we're really, we're really excited to see this continue to grow and become something that our community can be proud of.
All right. And thank you to Tony for visiting us during the summer and capturing that footage and helping us to put together that video. And just looking back, what a great celebration, a great time we had there. And I'm just so thankful for the opportunity to work with Candy and to be at Jefferson this summer and their building, for them to open the building to this program and to have our community in. And I know that we wouldn't have been able to do that without the staff that was there either. So we want to, we want to give a shout out to our staff and our high school volunteers and just our community volunteers. It was a really great opportunity. But again, the goal was to give students an opportunity to kind of come into this year excited about learning, being engaged through some enriching experiences and activities. And, you know, you just take a look at the pictures. The pictures just tell it all with their smiles there on the face. So this is really a celebration. I kind of get in tangles right now just looking back at this and thinking how great it was. And we just want to share some data with you relative to this. So Scott, I don't know if you can take a look at the next slide. You're just going to see lots of pictures here. Again, here are some of our MPW volunteers. We're just, we're hands-on, engaging. We want to share with you that we had 358 students enrolled this summer. And out of those 358 students, kindergarten through sixth grade, we had 86 students that had perfect attendance. That's 24% of our students that were there every day during the summer for five weeks. And it's important to note that this is one of the largest and longest summer programs that Muscatine Schools has offered. And again, without the, without the commitment of our staff and our volunteers, that would not have happened. But we understand that families had a number of things planned during the summer, vacations, other camps, those types of things. And so we were just excited about the fact that 24% of our students, 86 kids, we celebrated that, were there. And they, they were motivated to be there. And that actually exceeds typical attendance patterns for a typical school year. And during the summer, we think that's pretty special. So we also surveyed our students. And so we got, we wanted to figure out where our kids were at. We got some feedback from them. We wanted to share this with you. We asked four questions of our students and four questions of our parents. And the first question we asked was, would you attend Spark again if you had the opportunity? And 86% of our students, kindergarten through six, said yes. We had about 250 student survey responses. So that we felt was a pretty good number. We were happy with that. We asked them if they felt Spark helped improve their skills in reading. 86% of kids felt that yes, the work that they did during the summer helped them improve in their reading. We asked about math. Did Spark help them improve their skills in math? Again, from their perception. And 88% of students felt like yes, that was something that helped them improve. 97% of our students indicated that they liked their afternoon enrichment classes. And so one of those things is, this was a program this year where there wasn't a lot of choice. Students were kind of just assigned into classes at grade levels that we would, we worked with our community partners to develop based on the volunteers that we had available. But one of the things that we would recommend for next year is that we make that more of a choice. So students would, would have an opportunity to select their afternoon enrichment programs. But again, 97% of kids, for being pushed into an enrichment class, they still found that enjoyable. We thought that was, was great. So then the next, we also surveyed our parents and guardians. And we had 74 responses from our parents who sent students to the summer program. And we asked them if they would send their children to Spark again if given the opportunity. 93% of parents said absolutely yes, they would. And then, do they feel like it helped them, helped their child achieve and grow in reading? 87% responded yes. In math, 92% of our parents felt like we had an impact on their child's performance in math. And then when, you know, these were obviously topics of conversation. We got a lot of feedback from parents in the mornings when we were greeting kids, and they were, I don't know what you guys are doing here, but the kids cannot wait to get here every day. And so 99% of parents said, of those surveyed, said that they would, their children enjoyed those afternoon enrichment experiences. And so now we want to take a look here at just some of our community partners. You heard in the video Kim talk about several of them. You have a copy of the handout there. And in the PowerPoint here, the slide is linked. But there's a list of community partners at the very back of your packet there. And so it's, I think it's important for us to be able to note some of those that we had there. Kim Warren was our Director of Aligned Impact, was instrumental in helping to coordinate these with our community. So we give our thanks to her. But the Muscatine Art Center supported our kindergarten art classes. They worked with third and fourth grade. They had several field trips that they helped coordinate and organize. We had the City of Muscatine helping with some heart and soul, as you know, efforts that the city is focused on right now. They were able to bring that in and have those conversations with our students during the summer. County Conservation was there. That's always a big hit when you have live animals in there. I think Tony may have been there on the video day when we had chickens. That in and of itself was an experience for Tony. The Fire Department was there, working with, talking about water safety with kindergarten first and second grades. We obviously had ISU Outreach and Extension Office. Muscatine Community College, you heard from their admissions coordinator, Carrie there. And just great opportunities for field trips with our business partners here in Muscatine. Several are listed there, including guest speakers from Kent, Community Healthcare, The Merrill, MPW, The Greater Muscatine Chamber, Carver Pump, Eastern Iowa Community College, and Musco. We're just really grateful for them. Muscatine Power and Water, also, as you saw there, one of the biggest highlights, I think, Candy, was the day we opened the fire hydrants after water testing on a really hot summer day. And the students just couldn't wait to come back. They're already asking if they can do that next year. And they want to know what day that's going to be. The teachers, too, yeah. And Musser Library, you heard Betty Collins, our children's librarian here in town, talk about the bridge project they did with kindergarten. While I'm talking about Betty, I want to mention this Thursday evening, for the students who participated in that, they're holding a special celebration for the students, the kindergarten students and their families from 6 o'clock to 7 o'clock at the Musser Public Library to build on the bridge program that those students did. So they mailed out invitations to those families. They're inviting them back to follow up and just continue that conversation about learning and books and the, at the library. So super thankful for their, their efforts. We also had the Police Department as guest speakers, talking about forensic science class. We had one hallway that was completely roped off as a crime scene. And the officers coming in and working through the process that they use with the students when they, when they do that. The students were just so intrigued and fascinated by that. And then also, we had the Stanley Center. We had African storyteller Amakatwamba, who came in and presented to several of our grade levels. And the kids were just enthralled by that. And a great opportunity to think globally and outside of our, our community. And then also, the YMCA coming in and hosting sports camps and activities. We're very thankful for their support. So. And then finally, and I want to share some staff feedback with you that we had, again, some great staff helping. And as we debriefed and thought about planning for next year already, they wanted to know that kids love the enrichment courses. Definitely keep those in the afternoon. We had a focus on academics in the morning. We'll continue that in our planning. We also made an effort to get data on each of our students, both around math and reading, to our teachers, so they knew when they started the summer program, where those students were at. We enjoyed being able to teach students with a more hands-on approach to learning. And obviously, they enjoyed being able to connect learning with those community partners. So in planning for Spark for next summer, we're already beginning the conversation. Candy and I were just talking earlier last week about how exciting this is. We're, we're kind of holding ourselves back. Now that we've got this year started, we're already excited about looking forward to the summer. But we're going to start that conversation and intentionally in January, again, working with Aligned Impact of Muscatine to get those experiences set up for students. We want to continue to align our instruction, but we want to look at some assessments, and we want to do some things differently to get a little bit more data. And then to be able to reflect on where students are at when they start the summer, and then where they, where they conclude the summer. So that, that was an area that we want to focus on a little bit more as we move forward. We do have some tentative dates that we're looking at. We got some feedback on that. And so again, we're looking to be around June 21st as a start, target start date for this summer's program that hasn't been cemented yet. But we'll obviously need those teachers again. And we recognize that teachers are committing to giving up some time during the summer. And so that's important that we begin thinking about, how do we give them enough of a heads up? So we're going to do that a little bit earlier this year, so we can make sure we give teachers plenty of notice. And then again, working with our high school to get those volunteer students set up who are doing silver cord hours, they're, they were just so helpful. And then we also want to take a look at our enrollment criteria. Based on the feedback, we have, this has gotten a really popular response. And so we anticipate that a number of students will want to participate next summer. And again, based on that conversation around data and assessments, we want to make sure that we have some really good profiles for each student on where they're at in terms of their learning, so that we can continue to move things forward for them. That, is that, okay. I did a lot of talking. So we want to give you some time for questions if you have any questions of Candy or myself.
Have you, have you found that the kids have participated with their enthusiasm, obviously, coming back, talking to their peers? Have other kids that are possibly going to be interested? I know you had the, you had that on there about the enrollment criteria. Is there going to be a cap on the number or of kids that you'll have? Obviously, 358 was great, you know, if we can get more, that'd be, that'd be great also. Because I, particularly last year, as fill that gap that the kids at, end of last year, at the COVID, and get those kids caught up. So hopefully, we can increase those numbers and find that enthusiasm with those kids talking to their peers.
We did. Absolutely. It was, we were actually getting calls from, from parents who's, the kids were talking, and the parents were saying, how do I get my student enrolled in this? And actually, we were able to. We started with some numbers that were a little bit higher. And as you know, we had some that, for whatever reason, decided to exit the program. We were actually able to add and continue to keep our numbers up. So it was always our goal to get as many students as we could into those classrooms, maintaining reasonable class sizes, right? And so we were able to do that. And so as students dropped, we were able to call parents. We had a waiting list, and we were able to get students enrolled. So we did come up, we kind of had a good process for that, so that we could keep those numbers up and keep students who wanted to be there enrolled.
I have several questions. First of all, I do have to say that since I watch so many CSI shows where you have the stuff about forensic science classes, I would have loved to have been there myself. But leads me then actually to my question, when you say with this being, you know, such the enriched classes and that, are you helping to show these kids that, that some of these things, like say, for example, that forensic science, what kind of jobs and stuff that that will lead for them and wish to maybe have in the future, kind of start getting them excited about different type of things?
Actually, you know, MCC. That was the thing that was so beautiful. Having our community members. System, and also talking about the importance of learning how to read. Hard to blend all of that. And the most wonderful thing was just accelerating kids where they are. So there was not a sense of remediation, but acceleration. So wherever you come in at, we're going to help you get smarter every day. And that's a really beautiful thing, right? So kids, I think, had a really good time. They connected a lot of their learning to things that they might like.
Thank you.
You know, one, one of my favorite things that you said, connecting learnings to community partners. You know, I cannot imagine the value that we're adding to our kids by connecting them to partners in terms of learning soft skills at a very early age. So this, this is a great, great things to hear. So thank you for that.
So how long was a normal day? You had a morning, after, when did they start in the morning? When, when were they done in the afternoon?
Whoever answers, will you step up to the mic so we can pick you up?
It was exactly like a school day. They came in at eight and left at three.
Okay. So you guys basically had seven and a half hours for five weeks? I know in the past that it had been four hours for sixteen days. That's amazing. Congratulations. The fact that they're engaged, were you able to look at any of the, any students attendance data last year during the school year versus this year during the school year? Have you thought about that part of it to see where they, are they more engaged now this year because of participating? I guess that's really my question. Can you say?
Well, that's one of the things I would say that we're tracking. And right now, again, still being relatively early in the year, we're looking at those trends.
I will share with you anecdotally, you know, we had students from every district, every school around the district. And we provided transportation to the program. And we had students who I would say probably struggled with their attendance during the school year. But they were there every day. They got on that bus every day to get to Jefferson and get across town for that, for this program. So.
Do we maybe, and I don't want to put you on the spot, this, this is a rhetorical question.
Okay.
Do we maybe need to consider looking at the engagement that our kids have K-12 and trying to get them here? That way, if they're engaged, if they like what they're doing, they're going to come? Maybe that's just, there's my soapbox, I'll get off of that. But also you talked about choice possibly in the future. Will those, if you're going to let kids choose what they want in the afternoons, would those be, or have you considered those being multi-grade level classes? Or would those still just be, are, were they multi-grade level classes this year?
They were not, they were identified by grade level band. So again, that's something that we, you know, will look at planning going forward.
Even if it was, even if it was K-two, three, four, five, six? I don't know if it's, I don't see any, we, that, we've looped other things, we looped classes.
Right.
So I don't know why we couldn't.
Yeah, and I think that.
I don't want to get into your business.
One of the things that would be nice to look at is those kids that come into summer programming, like let's say for an example, a third grade student that comes in proficient at third grade, should that third grader stay in third grade or should they accelerate to fourth grade? Because they're really ready to begin learning fourth grade content. And so being able to look at our kids and kind of figure out where they go, which means that third grader would be in with some fourth graders. And I think that would probably be a wonderful thing.
If we're going to meet them where they're at and move them forward and accelerate them, then I would, I would support that.
Cory and I just talked about that a couple of weeks ago, just about how we could arrange that.
Some of it, though, I think we have to make sure that we consider that it's not just academically where they're at, but socially as well. Because I've had kindergarten kids that could read at a seventh or eighth grade level. Doesn't necessarily mean that we want kindergarten kids digesting our, our that information, yes, but be working with eighth graders, seventh graders, probably not.
I love the data about the students feeling, it was eighty-six and eighty-eight percent feeling more proficient in math, feeling more proficient in reading. There's a huge piece of if they feel successful, they're going to be successful. And that's, that's not always a piece of data that we get to measure. And it's not always a piece of data we talk about. But it's really important. And so when students are clearly wanting to be there, excited to come back, running into the building, many of the examples that you shared, it explains why those numbers are so high. So that, that thrills me to see that. The, the learning piece will absolutely come, but if they're that excited, that sets them up for success. And every student needs to feel successful. Sounds like I need to sign up for Spark next summer. I want to do some of this stuff.
You have time, I think.
Any other questions for Cory or Candy?
And I would just like to say thank you to Cory and Candy for running a tremendous program. Kim Warren was also just a, an asset to those activities for our kids. It was, this is an important program. And one of the things we know from research is that the, the achievement gap doesn't grow during the school year. It grows in those opportunities outside of school. And so creating these experiences, getting more kids involved in this, keeping them engaged and attending, and providing those experiences that provide context to their learning is critically important. We're going to see that continue to build year over year. So I'm just very thankful for both of you and the work that you've done with this program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, pardon me, just want to say one quick more thing. And that is, I was, had the opportunity to volunteer at the Art Center. So I was there when the kids came to be able to see the sustainability with Nancy Judd. And I want to tell you, those kids actually paid attention to what that was about the recycle, reuse and everything. And the staff and volunteers that was with them was very professional. It went very well. So that says well for what we have for staff. And then as well as the many, many different, many different opportunities all the way through County Conservation, all the way through. So thank you for all of that.
Our pleasure, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is a facility update. Ryan, if you're not coming with a video, it's going to be tough to compete, I'm just saying.
I, I have a video of the football stadium already, but I'm not going to introduce you to this because you just don't get it tonight. Sorry. So I want to focus on two basic updates. So I'm going to start with the Student Center, just to kind of give you guys an update. We have two student groups that have been meeting, one with HNI led by Leslie Akberger. And then we have another group that's been meeting with Nick Woodward from Legged Architects to kind of set some parameters, get some student impact or student input on what this Student Center, they want it to be. So HNI, that student group will be presenting on their furniture design to the building leadership, Clint, myself, in December, so that we can get an idea of what furniture they want, how we can set up our electrical to accommodate that, and that we can get that ordered in time to, to be here for the, the end of the project. So just to give you guys an idea of updates, this will theoretically go out for bid on January eleventh. Bid opening will be on February third. We'll do, we'll come back for board approval on the project on the fourteenth of February. Then we will start construction June first, as soon as the kids are out of the school building. I don't want to do any demo until they're out of the building. I want to in, impact the building as, as little as possible. So then we're shooting for an August fifteenth completion date. So we'll be ready to go for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. I also have some, kind of just some overview floor plans. So this is a very basic floor plan of what this is. The students were very adamant, they wanted access to adults, but they didn't want them right there. So what we've done is we've kind of, if you want to flip to the next one. So we, we've kind of placed our Student Services Therapy Area right next to that Student Center. But you can see that they're kind of all the way there, but they're not right in that Student Center. The students wanted some autonomy in that Student Center with access to adults. So we left that hallway there, so there's easy access to those, those resources for them. But they still have their own space.
So is this in the old science?
So this is in the old science wing. So we're looking at just under seven thousand square feet of space between these, these services. Additionally, if you can, you'll flip, our nurse's office is extremely outdated at the high school. So this new Student Center will also incorporate a new nurses' center in, in the building. So we're looking at new bathrooms, new triage area, new waiting room. So all of that will be incorporated into this Student Center as well. If you look the next couple of pictures, so there's three options that the students have started to come up with as far as interior designs of that Student Center. So they met with the architects with HNI and are starting, starting to develop what that Student Center is going to look like. So I just have some renderings here of three of the options that they've been looking at and working through. So this is option one. Option two is just a, again, just a more traditional space. And then if you go to option three, option three is a more open concept space that they've been working with. Just different shapes, different color palettes. Just different options for them to, to have in here. You'll also see along the sides, there's some different conference room, meeting areas. Those are very similar across all three designs. So the students can break out and go into small group settings for studying, for, for group work, but then still have that big open space there as well. The next thing is the centralized kitchen. Centralized kitchen is probably going to have the most changes for you guys right now. So in meeting with Alicia, in meeting with our Facility Committee, in meeting with the High School Administration and, and District Administration, we felt we needed to change the location of the centralized kitchen away from the high school. Couple of reasons for that. We have student safety issues that are coming up. If you guys have been into high school, our, our early bird gym class goes into the Van Heck Center starting at about six-thirty in the morning. It's really dark at six-thirty in the morning. And we have truck traffic coming in at six-thirty in the morning for our, for our centralized kitchen. So that was an, an issue that we had to address. Additionally, there's a limited space in the back of the high school. And there's only a single loading dock, which would kind of back up some of that truck traffic. The last thing that kind of cemented our, our request or decision was the timeline for this. With construction at the high school, we had to work around the school year. We couldn't disrupt the kitchen during the school year. So we would build a shell, shut down construction and then come back and redo it in the summer. If we change it to this Board Office location, this allows us to go a straight twelve-month construction window and be done. And early, into it earlier and have a very nice space here with zero of the safety concerns that we'd have at the high school. So as if you look, there's a couple proposals or items up on the table here for you guys. The first is, so I'll go through the construction timeline. If we go to the Board Office construction, so we'll send it out for bid in March, do the bid opening in April, board approval in April of that board meeting. Construction will, can begin then in May. And we'll be able to get into it in May of twenty-three instead of August of twenty-three at the earliest. So that puts us in getting the kitchen staff another three months to get used to their new centralized kitchen before service starts. So there are a couple of locations that are potential for, for this. Both at the back of the Board Office facility, just depends on the orientation of that. So we can set it kind of in the same orientation as the Board Office with the loading docks coming off to the, the south side. Or set it up kind of perpendicular to that with the loading docks coming in right on the edge. What we're looking at right now is how does this work for semi-traffic? Which is the most efficient for them to come in? And this building will be, we're going to set this at ground level. And we're going to do subsurface loading docks instead of building up the entire building and then having the loading docks up and elevated. It's more cost efficient for us. And then the last thing is just a potential floor plan that we, that we have. And it's really hard to read. If you guys want it, I can send it to you. But you, you have, I'm going to just do it. So we have big walk-in freezers here. Walk-in coolers here. Process coolers, process freezers, things that they're working with that day. We have longer storage, shorter storage, different process area, hot process area. Storage, we have dishwashing, sculling station, office space, locker space, dining storage, built-in bakery, so all of that in one space, which we don't have anywhere close to that now. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you guys have on any, any of those projects or anything else that we're doing.
So what will happen to the space at the high school for the kitchen that's there today?
So right now, nothing. We, we won't do anything. This, the, the servery in the kitchen in, at the Board Office is not in immediate need. So we don't, we don't need to go in and do anything to that.
So will we still, will we use that space differently though, after this is built?
Yes, yes, well, we will, we'll use that space differently, but we don't, so we'll take all the, of that production out of the back of that. So we'll, we'll shift everything here.
And so then what will happen with that space? Do you?
Storage.
Okay.
Was there any concern or we checked on semi-traffic coming in? Are these roads, you know, are, are they accessible for, I mean, not accessible, are they zoned for semi-traffic coming in?
Yeah, we can bring semi-traffic in.
Okay, good.
Do you need space for expansion at some point? It looks pretty tight.
So it, it, it looks tight, but this is just over seven thousand two hundred square feet. So it's not a small space. This is very similar in size to what other district, Geneseo just did one, Dubuque just did one. All very similar sizes. So I, I'm not necessarily concerned about expansion. We do have room in the back that we could expand if necessary. But at this point in time, I'm not concerned. And Alicia was extremely happy with the size that we were presenting. So that was further solidified my.
Do we think this takes care of all of our central kitchen needs going forward? Or will we be, do we have other areas that we're still cooking out of that we may move over here at some point?
Well, well, so we'll still have areas that we're, like Clark will still be an area that we're cooking out of. But I think at some point in time, everything can get shifted to this without any other, like additions to this building.
Are we, okay, are we still on target on what we're thinking that as in we have been proposed as what the budget for this, at this point in time? Because when you say the bids coming out by next year, you know.
Yeah, virtually identical price structuring with this versus at the high school.
Does this, does this have us keep central until this is open?
Regardless, we'd have to keep central until we have some sort of centralized kitchen. So this does get us potentially out of central a little bit earlier.
Can I jump back to the Student Center?
Absolutely.
The bid that'll go out, is that just for design or is that for all the soft products that'll go in it as well?
Design, construction, soft costs.
The furniture as well?
Furniture too, right. Which is one of the reasons why I want them to present in December. So we have a really solid number going forward with what, what we'll have for going out for bid.
Do you have any concerns just with the timeframe, supply chain, getting out your crystal ball?
Tammy, I always have concerns. I, I, I'm optimistic that the supply chain, by the time we're ready to start construction, will be functioning closer to normal than what we're seeing right now. Again, I don't know. But I, I hold out hope for the best.
Yeah, well, it's not exactly like you can change the timeframe either. I, it is what it is, right?
Yeah, as far as the Student Center goes, I know if, if we can get everything, the frame of construction from June one to August fifteenth is very doable. So I'm not, I'm not concerned about the length of construction, if that, if that helps answer any questions.
Okay.
If you don't have what you need, do you skip to the next year or do you construct during the school year?
I do.
You can answer that later too.
I think it depends on, it probably would depend on what issues we're having.
It probably would depend on what issues we're having. If it's materials for the actual building of the space, different from furniture. Right? We can function and move furniture later. But if we can't get certain steel components or something, that may push things off.
Yeah, if we're, if we're having problems getting girders, then, then yeah, we'd have to do something differently.
And how substantial that is. Is it something where you could come in on Christmas break, right? Or that winter break over two weeks and do a lot of the substantial work that it wouldn't be disrupting, you know, the day-to-day operations of the school? That's an option, as opposed to waiting the whole year. So, it just depends on the variables of what we're trying to manage with that.
One of the good things about the Student Center space is it's not being really utilized very much now. So, we can go in and tear it out if we were still having some issues getting stuff in, so we could do some of that construction and kind of break it down.
Just a few projects going on.
Just a few. That's okay, though. Keeps me busy.
Alright. Any other questions for Ryan before he slips away?
I have a question about the scoreboard?
Yes.
Have any idea?
So...
I know it's, I know it's...
So, I wish I could say that it's, it's on its way. It's, it's running into the same exact issues that everyone else. We have chip issues, we have shipping issues, and I have not gotten an arrival date on that yet.
Good for the scoreboards in the gym?
Yeah, same thing with the scoreboards for the gym. We're, we're waiting on those chips and supply chain issues. The one, the one thing I will say is Muskel Vision has been starting to be installed.
Oh, great.
If you guys were at the stadium, you could see the cameras up on the stadium last night, or on Friday night. And the cable's being run to all the other locations as well. So, that's a, that's a step in the right direction for that.
If the, if the outdoor scoreboard magically would show up in December, can it be installed in the middle of the winter, or will you have to wait until spring to be able to do that? There's obviously not a need for it on the track in the middle of the winter.
Yeah, I would be hesitant to install it over the winter for a couple reasons. Just, it's out there in the weather for another few months without having any real need. And also with the new track service, with some of the other stuff, I, I would hesitate to put some of that equipment near or on that track without having a better idea of what's gonna happen.
It'll be a great addition for spring.
It absolutely will be. It'll be beautiful for track season. Maybe.
Alright. Ryan, thank you. Our next update is Certified Enrollment Update.
Yeah, I wanna just share some of our certified enrollment. Obviously, that's, that snapshot is taken October 1st. At the end of the year, you know, we will look at changes that occurred, and we have the opportunity, if enrollment changes, to make adjustments to our budget based on that. Some really, I would say, unique dynamics to the enrollment for this year that I wanna talk through a little bit. So, overall, and this is when we talk about the certified enrollment, this is our budget enrollment. This would be the weighted K-12 enrollment. So, when Tom Anderson is planning budgets and staffing and all that, it's based on this number. So, for this year, we're down 87 students from last year. And I would say that was concerning to me. Although, when you look in perspective to previous years, it's lower than last year. And out of the last eight years, it's probably towards some of the fewest students that we've lost, right? But the interesting dynamics, when you look at that number, and so that puts us, again, K-12 puts us at about 4,444 students, that's weighted, right? Which is slightly different from actual bodies of students. So, when we look at those numbers, our Early Learning Center is up. The numbers of students going to our Early Learning Center is up. Our kindergarten enrollment is up. The number of students who open enroll out of our district is down. The number of students who open enroll in is up. And the number of students who are registered in our homeschool program is down. When you look at all those factors, those are all positive data points. When your open enrollment out is lower than it's been in the past, the open enrollment in is up, your kindergarten enrollment's up. So, then there's these other variables that are playing into it. And part of that is, you know, as we look at where students are moving, we lost a lot of students from 5th to 6th grade. And that was a, a big year for us, or that was, that was a big transition year. We lost about 25, 26 students there. Our community, so overall, our, our Early Learning Center, so our Melk Center, that enrollment is up, but our community partners are down. And so, again, I think especially at the elementary level, we're still seeing an impact of COVID as we look at where kids are at. But again, some, some positive signs. So, Scott and the, and the team, and David and our data team did some, you know, some additional number crunching, so we can run enrollments of students from last year that were here, registered, and students from this year, right? And, and we see the difference of, you know, those students, you take out the seniors because we know they're, obviously, they're not coming back. So, of the 285 students that were different, now, again, 200 students also moved in, so it's not necessarily, but we look at those 285 students who were here last year that aren't here this year. The majority of those, a little over, I think Scott told me, about 200 have moved. They've moved out of state. Where are they moving to out of state? They're moving to Florida, to Texas, to Missouri. Those seem to be the predominantly, the highest places that they're moving to. They're moving to other places within the state. And then, there's a, kind of the next group of students are the students who are juniors that haven't shown back up as seniors. We haven't seen them re-enroll here, but we haven't, they haven't indicated that they're enrolled somewhere else. We're looking at all of these very carefully. Again, there's some positive pieces to this. Again, with our kindergarten enrollment, which we put a lot of focus on some of our marketing pieces for that, as you look at our Early Learning Center, our bilingual program, as we talk about the dual-language program, those are all positive things. As we look at starting to shrink the number of students out versus in, those are positive things. I think it still mirrors our community, as we see kind of a slowly decline in our population within the, within the community as well. So, we'll continue to monitor that. We've been on a budget guarantee for the last few years. Chances are, we'll, we'll be on that budget guarantee again. So, again, as we look at, there's some, there's some positive data pieces. Last year, I know Tony, as we looked at those folks who opened and rolled out, made contacts with a lot of those families, and by and large, it's, you know, changing jobs, they're moving. It's not necessarily, we're not happy with the district, we're going somewhere else. So, again, I think there's some really positive pieces here, but we wanna continue to shrink that number and shrink that number as much as possible. With that, questions that I can answer? And if I can't answer them, we'll dig back into the numbers and I'll bring something back to you.
I just had one, Clint. We have had some projections in the past about how many students we expect to lose. How, do we know what that projection was and how this compares to that?
Yeah, so it's lower than what was projected. So, the other thing we're doing, and this is part of the work we were doing with our Facility team as well. So, one of the things they didn't do last year for us is a capacity study. So, they looked at our enrollment trends, but then you lay them over our building capacities to see what's happening kind of building by building. We did not have them do that. We're having them do that work now. And as we have them do that, want them to look at where they thought we'd be last year to what the numbers are, we're actually seeing this year, to see, you know, where were we off? And do we need to reset those numbers moving forward? So, when we have that information, I'll bring that back to you as well.
Clint, you said our homeschool numbers this year were down. Do we know how those compared with two years ago? Because I think that would probably be more accurate with the pandemic. It's like, how do we compare when there wasn't a pandemic? Are we coming back? I think, I'm just guessing, but I'm guessing a lot of people kept their kids home and...
We're about nine students higher than we were two years ago.
Okay.
Any other questions on Certified Enrollment Update? I think that takes us to our superintendent update.
Okay, so really quickly, first of all, I would just like to introduce Jamie Crager. Jamie, if you would stand up, she is our new Director for Human Resources, and she's been on the job just a little over a week now. So, Jamie comes to us out of Davenport with 18 years of HR experience, school HR experience with the Davenport Community School District. So, we're very excited to have her on staff and, and moving forward. So, I wanted you to be able to kind of put a face with the name. So, then with that, just, I wanna spend just a little bit of time, do kind of a quick update on COVID, and kind of where we're at. So, again, we're kind of looking at this week, all indications this week, we'll have some information on a vaccine decision for those students aged 5 through 11. My understanding is that there'll be a committee meeting tomorrow with the FDA, which they would likely, again, all indications that that committee would approve it, then it would have to go to kind of full authorization with FDA. And then, a final step is CDC recommendation. So, we're still hearing the availability, probably the first week of November. I know our local public health is starting to reach out and ask about coordinating and opportunities for vaccination for those parents who choose to do that, and what that might look like. So, I know they're starting to think about it and how that might look. Just some quick updates, and most of you are probably aware of this, our county rate continues to go down, so that's looking good as of last week. And they update that once a week. We were at, our seven-day average was 5.9%, which is low as it's been for quite some time. As we look at the percentage of cases that are reported in that state website for 0 to 17, that's down over this last week to 11%. We're, in the past, been as high as 25%. We're seeing that change. We've seen a number of changes to our confirmed positive cases within the district, both staff and students. Where we were seeing three, four, or five positive cases per day, we're seeing four or five for the week, and that's students and staff combined. So, that number, again, mirroring our county data, has dropped. As we look at our kind of COVID-related attendance, again, as high as nearly 27, close to 30%, has dropped down to about 10 or 11%. And week to week, we're kind of monitoring that. The other piece, as we look at cases per 100,000, again, at a high point, at one point of 43, now we're down to about 20. So, our staff attendance is improving. All of the, so, all of the data points are looking really positive and are moving in the right direction. So, as we start talking about access to a vaccine, they're talking about therapeutic options, over-the-counter treatments for COVID. The boosters are in place, our county data is looking better, our, our student data, our staff data is looking better. I just, I tell you that to anticipate. You know, one of the things we talked about with our mask mandate for pre-K6 is we would reevaluate that. I would anticipate an action item in November to talk about that. And what, again, got a lot of things to play out over these next few weeks here, but things are looking good, so that's really positive, and something to look forward to at that November meeting. That's all I have for an update. Questions?
Thank you for the update. That takes us to just a couple of quick announcements. November 2nd will be the, there will be election. School Board candidates will be on that ballot, as well as several others. I would encourage you to, one, look at all your candidates that are running for all positions in your, in the city, in the community, and then head out to the poll on November 2nd, or if you choose to do so and want to vote early at the Auditor's Office, you can do that as well. If you have questions about where your polling location is, you can find that out through the Auditor's Office. Then, November 15th will be the next time that this board will meet. There will actually be two meetings that evening. There is a meeting that finishes out everything for the current board for the year, and then there is a reorganizational meeting that happens directly after that. That will start at 7:00 PM, and it'll be at City Hall. Are there any other announcements for the good of the cause? Hearing none, the board will then be moving into a closed session to do a, during the year, superintendent evaluation. For those that are in our audience, there are very few things by law that the board is able to go into a closed session for. This is one of them. In a closed session, there is never action taken. Action legally can only happen in an open session. We have no action to take this evening, but I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to go into closed session. And the next thing we need is, Madam Secretary, would you do a roll call vote for us, please? Director Cooney?
Here.
Draba?
Aye.
DeBeet?
Aye.
Finn?
Aye.
McArthur?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Sure.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you. We will take just about a three-minute break. The board will convene in the West Room, so we'll head out that way if you need to use the restroom. If you want to stay and wait for the board to come back into open session, you certainly can do that, but we'll come into open session and then we'll adjourn, so.